Within those that we come in contact with each day, unity within our communities and our nation. My Lord, there is an enemy out there trying to divide us and to rip each of those institutions apart. So Father, would we see it for what it is and not lash out in kind? May we change our critical thoughts and even the words that we want to speak into prayers into the situation, my Lord? We need you more and more each day, Father. And so we ask that you would just prompt us, Lord, prompt us to do the right thing, to think the right thing, that the motives and attitudes of our hearts would prevail, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move on, move on now to unscheduled appearances. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on items of interest within the board jurisdiction and which are not already on the agenda. The board will not answer questions impromptu and concerns or complaints will be referred to the appropriate staff. For items which are on the agenda, members of the public will be provided with an opportunity to address the board on each item added as brought up for discussion. Speakers should limit their comment to not, not more than two minutes. If we have any speaker perks.
I have received written correspondence from Stephen Varela. It was placed online and the board did receive those documents. The first speaker is Daryl.
Morning, Daryl. How you doing, buddy?
Good morning, Honorable Chair and Honorable Supervisors. My name is Daryl Terrell. I live in Reno Valley in Riverside County. I drove four hours to say what I gotta say. And since May seventeen, twenty twenty-two, I've spoken before councils and boards across California urging adoption of the catalytic converter unlawful possession ordinance. And let's be clear, as you, as you guys know, catalytic converter theft hasn't gone by no means. Just ask one of your neighbors who had it happen, waking up to find their car stripped, their jobs and livelihoods put at risk, point two, grant theft, tampering, or receiving stolen property. Those laws require tying the converter to a specific victim. And sometimes that's nearly impossible when we deal with these kinds of thefts. And yes, the folks in Sacramento have taken steps, been netting, restricting sales, defining dismantlers and recyclers, but none addressed the mere possession of a catalytic converter. And here's something you're gonna be, you're gonna find interesting. You know, under law, A B, uh, this state law, A B six forty-one allows a person to steal up to eight catalytic converters and no consequences. So what I've done, as I said, since May seventeen, I've been going through central, I mean, central and Southern California, asking, um, boards like yourselves to adopt the ordinance, the one and done ordinance, as we did in Riverside County. All of our twenty-eight cities have adopted it. Fresno County, I advocated in Fresno County and Kern County. And I'm doing it in Madera. I'm doing it in other counties in Central and Southern California. So we all be on the same page, because Sacramento is not gonna do what, what is necessary. They care more about the criminals than they care about the victims. And a lot of, especially in your, in your, um, county, you have a lot of folks that could, um, just making ends meet. And somebody in your agriculture, if something like this happens, it could cause a financial disaster. And who has that kind of money to replace that? So what I'm doing is to ask this honorable body to consider adopting this ordinance. And so we all will be on the same page. And so we can keep the momentum going and show these crooks, if you come in this county or any other county throughout this state, that you will be held accountable. You're not gonna escape with, um, eight, your skate law, but you're gonna, you're gonna be held accountable with one and you're done. So thank you for listening to me and it was worth the trip to see your beautiful county. And let's, let's get it done. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Do you have a draft language that you can turn into the court?
Oh, I emailed all of you guys. Yeah, emailed.
Four-hour drive from Moreno this morning.
Yes, sir. I could have did it online, but I said, you know what? I'm, I, I feel strongly about this, because my friend had his stolen at, at the job where I worked. And I knew the state legislature wasn't gonna do a doggone thing about it. So it's, it's up to people, regular folks like me, who have worked two jobs, work at Lowe's, work at State of Brothers Bag and Grocers, to make a difference, so people in this room don't have to go through that.
I love State of Brothers.
And just to give our, uh, share, a good share back there, the tools, so they can hold these people accountable, whether it's one or eight.
Are you, I wanna make your drive worthwhile. Are you, uh, this is your second time. Are, are you running for office?
No. No, I'm on the plan commission in my own town, but, you know, when you feel strongly about something and you see it happen, and especially when you see like Prop forty-seven, how that happened and seeing people run out of stores stealing and you can't do anything about it. And then talking to Sheriff, uh, my Sheriff Bianco, and it's frustrating that we have to do something. Because these folks in Sacramento, like I said before, all they wanna do is put a Band-Aid on something and say, hey, look what we done. But you didn't do a doggone thing, because people find loopholes in these creeps that's what they feed on. They knowing that they're, they know a lot better than ordinary people do. So it's time for us to put a stop to it.
Appreciate your passion, sir. Thank you. Thank you for coming down.
Our next speaker is Alex Seawalker.
Alex Seawalker. Good morning, Alex Seawalker. Staff should be.
Good morning, middle-aged reductive Verboon and members of the board. Alex Seawalker, speaking as a private citizen at this time, I must note, officially on break for this public comment period. I'm wearing a couple of different hats today, which is fitting, because I definitely have a big head, so I definitely have the space for it. But the reason I'm before your board this morning is because I wanted to respectfully invite you, the community, those watching at home, to three exciting upcoming events. The first is the Cemetery Walk in Lemoore, which is hosted by the Sarah A. Mooney Museum, which will be the Saturday, the, this coming Saturday on the twenty-seventh. It's an opportunity to learn about our local history, some prominent families that helped establish Kings County and Lemoore as a city. So really exciting opportunity, tickets are on sale. The next opportunity, wearing my Chamber of Commerce hat for Lemoore, is the Salute to Ag Dinner. We'd have a former recipient of Agriculture List, uh, Ag supporter, Doug Verboon. And we have our upcoming, um, reckoning, uh, with Supervisor Joe Nevs, really excited, along with Keenan Farms, an incredible industry partner here in Kings County. And then also with the Sarah Mooney Museum in October on the twenty-third, we'll be having our Open House Mixer. So really hope to see everybody there. But the last one I wanted to speak on today is something that's really near and dear to my heart, which is the Rotary Club of Lemoore and our upcoming crowd feed on November eighth. This is how we build beds for children sleeping on the floor who do not have a bed. We give them brand-new mattress, bed frame, pillows, blankets. Whether it's SpongeBob or princesses, they get to make a bed that's their own, which is linked to better health outcomes, like academic performance and just overall physical health. We also do our dictionary program, our little free libraries, and so much more good that I can't say in two minutes. But just want to respectfully invite everybody to these events. And if you're interested, tickets are available. You can contact me or my fellow Rotarians and my fellow chamber members. Thank you for your time and I yield back.
Thank you very much. And I'll be at the salute to Ag. I get to present Supervisor Nevs with his award, but I get to say whatever I want. Unless I could be bribed to say nice things, you know, available.
Fantastic. Thank you.
That's all the speaker cards that I'm aware of. It doesn't.
Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak today? Anybody online? Nothing. Okay, we'll move on now to approval of the minutes. Uh, item number three, report out of possession from regular meeting on September ninth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There is nothing to report.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes from regular meeting, September ninth, twenty twenty-five. Motion approved by Supervisor Robinson, second by Supervisor Nevs, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Could you please check and see if the public has anything to say on that?
Does the public have anything to say on that? Any comments on the last consent counter, last meeting?
Thank you.
I had it right.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Verboon?
Abstained.
Rusty Robinson? Robert Thayer?
Yes.
Four favor, one abstention. Uh, thank you very much. So now we're gonna go to the consent counter. All items listed on the consent counter are to be considered routine and will be acted by one motion. If a board member has a request or requests additional information or wishes to comment on an item, the vote should not be taken until questions have been addressed or comments made. And the public has an opportunity to comment on the consent counter items. That's your pleasure. We have a motion to move by Supervisor Nevs, second by Supervisor there. And do we have any questions from the audience? Anybody online? Any written? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson? Robert Thayer?
Yes.
Five in favor. Thank you very much. We'll move on now to item number five, regular calendar, Behavioral Health Department. Good morning.
Good morning. Morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Is the thing on? I can't really hear too well. Is it running? Cool. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Brett Wolman, Deputy Director from Behavioral Health. This morning, I'm here to respectfully request that your board adopt a resolution proclaiming the month of October, twenty twenty-five, a Substance Use and Misuse Prevention Month in Kings County. Every October, communities across the country come together to recognize the importance of prevention and to honor the work being done to keep individuals, families, and neighborhoods safe and healthy. Substance use affects people across every age, background, and community, and prevention is one of the most powerful tools we have to reduce risk and build resilience. Locally, our prevention programs work hand-in-hand with schools, parents, youth, and community organizations to promote protective factors, reduce access to harmful substances, and create supportive environments where young people can thrive. By focusing on prevention, we can interrupt cycles of addiction, support mental and physical well-being, and strengthen our county. In recognition of Substance Use Prevention Month, Kings Partnership Substance Use Response Group, funded by Kings County Behavioral Health and its members, will be targeting middle schools across Kings County to provide prevention education to youth during Red Ribbon Week, observed from October twenty-third to the thirty-first. This year's theme, Life is a Puzzle, Solve it Drug-Free, will be emphasized, uh, will be emphasized throughout the outreach. This initiative provides an opportunity to engage with nearly three thousand students and school staff, fostering stronger, healthier school communities through education, awareness, and support. In addition, California Health Collaborative will also be hosting Substance Use Prevention Presentations across Kings County communities. Substance use prevention messaging will be shared across various social media platforms and throughout the county. This proclamation also allows us to acknowledge the leadership of youth and the community advocates who are stepping forward to address substance use before it begins. Their voices remind us that prevention is not just about avoiding risk, but also creating positive opportunities, healthy choices, and strong foundation for the future. With your support, Kings County can stand alongside our state and national partners in raising awareness this October. Together, we affirm that prevention saves lives, reduces costs, and builds healthier communities for all of us. In closing, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I respectfully submit for the adoption of resolution proclaiming October, twenty twenty-five, as National Substance Use and Misuse Prevention Month. Thank you for your time, commitment, and partnership in supporting the, uh, in supporting prevention. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Motion by Supervisor Robinson, second by Supervisor Nevs. Any questions from the audience? Play sober today?
I hope so.
Any questions from the, online, anything on the written?
No.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson? Robert Thayer?
We have a, uh, resolution here. We'll deliver down to you in a while. All right, next item. Regular item, uh, Probation Department, Leonard Baker. Oh, we have, uh, Wendy?
Yes.
Dibble?
Yes.
Morning, Wendy.
Good morning.
Early this morning.
Yeah.
They didn't let you in till.
Better early than late.
We still have coffee outside.
I didn't get mine, so. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Wendy Dibble, Deputy Probation Officer and current Director of the Branch Juvenile Facility. I'm here with Assistant Sheriff Travis Day and, uh, Kings Office, Kings County Sheriff's Lieutenant Sherry Long, as this is a joint agenda. As of January first, twenty twenty-three, all counties are mandated to implement pre-release medical application processes in county jails and juvenile correctional facilities. On January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, the Department of Healthcare Services, DHCS, received federal approval under its California Advancing and Innovating Medical Cal, Cal AIM for short, eleven fifteen demonstration for providing access and transferring health path capacity building funds to support the Justice Involved Reentry Initiative. Under the CalAIM eleven fifteen demonstration, DHCS received approval to disseminate up to four hundred and ten million dollars statewide in capacity building funds to support the planning and implementation of pre-release and reentry services in the ninety days prior to an individual's release into the community. These funds will help counties support the planning and implementation of the provision of targeted pre-release medical health services to individuals in state prisons, county jails, and youth correctional facilities who meet the eligibility criteria as outlined in the CalAIM section eleven fifteen demonstration approval. The Department of Healthcare Services will partner with state agencies, counties, providers, and community-based organizations to establish a coordinated community reentry process that will assist people leaving incarceration to connect with the physical and behavioral health services they need before release and reentering their communities. The initiative will help California address the unique and considerable healthcare needs of justice-involved individuals, improve health outcomes, deliver care more efficiently, and advance health equity across the state. Critical to this initiative is implementing links to services outlined in California Penal Code, section forty-eleven, point eleven, parent H, parent five, which states the DHCS, "In consultation with counties, county sheriffs, probation departments, medical managed care plans, and medical behavioral health delivery systems, shall develop and implement a mandatory process by which county jails and county juvenile facilities coordinate with medical care, managed care plans, and medical behavioral health delivery systems to facilitate continued behavioral health treatment in the community for county jail inmates and juvenile inmates that were receiving behavioral health services before their release." "We are asking you to approve the agreement with the California Forensic Medical Group, Inc., for consultative services to assist the probation department and the sheriff's office in implementation of this mandated initiative. Thank you for your time and consideration of our request, and I'm happy to answer any question."
Wendy, any questions for Wendy? Any questions for the audience? Internet audience, nobody? Okay, motion, motion by Supervisor Nevs, second by Supervisor Thayer. And of course, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson? Robert Thayer?
Yes.
Five in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go now to administration, and we have Giselle. Good morning, Giselle.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Giselle Coy, Administrative Analyst, Kings County Administration. Pursuant to section nine thirty-three of the California Penal Code, the counties, the county are required respondents to the findings and recommendations outlined in the grand jury's report titled, "The Kings County Policy and Procedure Manual, Special District Disbursements." The response to the grand jury report has been prepared for board's consideration. On July eighth, twenty twenty-five, the county received a copy of a grand jury report, which requires a response from the board. In order for a response to this report to be timely, the board must issue it within ninety days or by October sixth, twenty twenty-five. Attached is a proposed letter by staff for review and approval. Below is the summary of the county's response. For the first finding and recommendation, the county acknowledges the need for a formal policy and procedures manual regarding the dispersment and auditing of public funds allocated to special districts in Kings County. Currently, no such manual exists, leaving gaps in the process and oversight of these funds. To address this, the county is committed to developing and publishing a comprehensive policy and procedures manual for the dispersments of funds to special districts by September first, twenty twenty-five. The manual will include requirements for fund allocation, tracking, and auditing to ensure accountability and compliance for the applicable laws and agreements. For the second finding and recommendation, the county recognizes that the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funds were dispersed to the three cemetery districts in Kings County, Corcoran, Hamford, and Lemoore, between December twenty twenty-two and January twenty twenty-three. These dispersments totaling one hundred thousand to Corcoran, two hundred and sixty thousand to Hamford, and a hundred and forty thousand to Lemoore were made at the request of the Kings County Board of Supervisors, but without formal request or justification from the cemetery districts. Additionally, no tracking or auditing of these funds were conducted by the county to ensure compliance with the agreements. As a result, the county will initiate audits of the ARPA funds dispersed to the cemetery districts by August first, twenty twenty-five. The audits will verify the funds were allocated and used in accordance with the intended purposes and agreements. The third finding and recommendation found that similarly, ARPA funds were also distributed to four community service districts in Kings County, Armona, Home Garden, Kettleman City, and Stratford, between November twenty twenty-one and October twenty twenty-three. These funds were meant to assist with utility bills and arrears for residents within these communities. Specifically, the dispersments were as follows. Sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents to Armona, two hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-four cents to Home Garden, eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars and seventeen cents to Kettleman, and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents to Stratford. Like the cemetery districts, these dispersments occurred without formal request or justifications from the community service districts, and no tracking or auditing was conducted by Kings County to ensure compliance. As with the cemetery districts, the county will conduct audits of the ARPA funds dispersed to these community service districts by August first, twenty twenty-five, to ensure that the funds were allocated and utilized appropriately. For findings one, two, and three, and recommendations one, two, and three, moving forward, the county recognizes the need for stronger oversight and accountability regarding the dispersment of public funds to special districts. As such, all future dispersments to special districts will be subject to a formal application process with clearly defined eligibility criteria and mandatory reporting requirements. These measures will help ensure that public funds are used efficiently, effectively, and in compliance with relevant agreements and laws. At this time, we respectfully ask your board to approve the response to the grand jury report titled, "Kings County Policy and Procedure Manual, Special District Disbursements," as the board's response. I appreciate your time, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any question or comments on the board? By Valley, oh, by Robinson.
This might actually be a question for Eric. So Eric, in response to, uh, item number two, we lack the infrastructure basically to do, to do an audit?
Uh, yeah, so right now currently, um, in order for us to set up an internal audit department to where we can do a full-blown audit, uh, I'd need more staff and, and time to get that infrastructure put in place. What we can do and what we have done since the drafting of this, we have reached out to the two other cemetery districts, uh, Lemoore and Hamford, and we reviewed all the expenditures that they had against their ARPA, and we found them to be, you know, in compliance. But we can't do a full-blown audit with an actual audit report and internal audit, because we don't have that. I, I'm the only one that can, is fully trained to audit, and I can't be like a one-person auditing show. I need other people to come and review my work. I need to reach out to other counties to come and then do peer reviews of our work papers, and we just don't have that set up right now.
So a couple of things. Either A, can we sub it out? Or B, can we at least provide some time?
Yeah, we can sub it out. Um, there's a lot of smaller organizations out there, like cities and counties that, you know, will go out to a CPA firm and have them, you know, perform the function of internal audit. It just, you know, costs.
Sure. And, and if it costs too much, okay. But maybe we can provide a time. Understood, you're, you're busy over there, I get it, but at least that would ensure.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. And, and again, we can work with admin and, and the board to kind of see what you guys want to do. It's, you know, we could do an RFP, get that out there, you know, establish the procedures and, and the kind of internal audit procedures we want them to do, and then issue an RFP based on that, and then, um, probably wouldn't take too much longer after that to get in front of the board for approval and get them onboarded.
Thank you. What kind of, what's the audit cost for?
Um, for, uh, you know, a small cemetery district, ten to fifteen thousand. Uh, but that's a full-blown audit.
A full-blown forensic audit?
Yeah, like a full-blown audit, as in, you know, they're coming in, they're testing all the controls, they're interviewing everyone, they're, you know, testing, you know, every balance sheet account and all the revenue. Like, that's fifteen grand, um, for an internal audit. We wouldn't need to be doing that level of an audit, so it'd probably be less than that, um, probably significantly less than that. We have also implemented and adopted a subrecipient monitoring policy, uh, for the county, which this would have covered if we had it in place and done it. It requires departments to go out and assess the, the subrecipient to see, like, what their levels of controls are. It's like a more, it's a less stringent audit. But you, like, in this case, we would have gone and looked at all the cemetery districts and the community services are seeing, like, what their history is of audits. If they have all their audits up to date and, you know, they're clean, maybe we do a little less oversight. If they're, you know, haven't had an audit done in years, they have findings in those audits that have been completed, then maybe we'll adjust the agreement to make them submit, you know, proof of expenditure to us, and then we cut the check to them to either reimburse them, or we cut a check to the vendor. So there's multiple ways we could have done that. Uh, we do have that policy in place now. It wasn't at the time. But there, there are things now that we have in place now, but if we want to do a full special district procedures manual, then that's probably be implemented in there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, but on the subject of Steve Robinson's concerns, I think sometimes it's not, um, the county's responsibility to spend that money. So when you look in the case of a Corcoran Cemetery District, where their board, um, the Board of Directors, uh, had not, uh, posted out their books in over three years, had not, uh, balanced out in over three years, um, let their manager, uh, cut checks, handwritten checks, uh, many times without ten ninety-nines to vendors, and, uh, get themselves in financial, um, uh, off-balance financial, uh, situations. And how can anyone say that it's the county's responsibility and go spend a lot of money to conduct your forensic audit? That's your job as a, uh, a body, a governing body, in this case, a governing body of a cemetery district. Uh, they have funds, they had a CPA. Um, and if they're not doing this work, it should not fall on us. But how many times do we say, no good deed goes unpunished? Here we are, um, and I'm gonna get going now, looking at, uh, um, number two here in the background page. Here we are in the middle of a pandemic, a COVID pandemic. The whole world is scrambling early on, on how to deal with the negative impacts of the pandemic. In this case, uh, you know, we got these ARPA funds, we got these monies. We held on to them for a long time, and I think Kings County was very smart, very conservative with the monies. And I stand one hundred percent behind the ways we invested this money. We didn't do anything that, uh, no other county may not have done as it relates to, um, bailing out, um, some special districts, like small community service districts, like Stratford and Armona, where, um, they went in the arrears on, on public utilities. A lot of people, uh, got impacted in different ways, some by a loss of a paycheck, a loss of a job, and, uh, or for some reason or another, just didn't pay. And, um, and so then when these folks, we see these small communities struggling as, uh, leaders in the county, we don't sit back and go, well, that's Stratford, they're on their own. That's Kettleman, they're on their own. No, that it's Kings County. And as leaders, we got together with our C A O and our department heads and, and the sheriff, and we came up with a really good plan. We had a committee who, um, vetted a lot of requests and ways to use this money. We got it agendized, we got it publicized, and then we sat up here and we had long discussions, and we voted, and we dispersed monies, and I'm not gonna get hit on that by anybody, uh, and not by the grand jury. Sorry, respectfully. But, um, so in the case of, and by the way, I'm gonna ask the board to table this, because I got a lot that I want to add to this letter, because reading this personally, it disregards a lot of work and a lot of frustration that I, that I've done, that the grand jury knows I've done, because I've sat down with them and I shared with them a lot of this information that I'm reading here. But if you're gonna do this, point out the work that's been done. So to speak to just to Corcoran, to say that we gave Corcoran Cemetery money, they didn't ask for it. That's not true. I'm their county supervisor. I'm hearing from people. I'm going down there and sitting with the manager of the cemetery district, who's telling me, supervisor, prior to the pandemic, we're averaging about four or five funerals a month. During the pandemic, we're now, uh, averaging sixteen to eighteen funerals a month. The county of Kings, we had four hundred eighty-seven registered COVID. The county of Kings, we had four hundred and eighty-seven registered COVID deaths. Now, you could argue with it, this person died COVID, whatever. It's how it's registered. Okay, in data, Google it. Okay, so when I'm sitting there and I'm talking to a manager at a cemetery district, and by the way, I went there because my constituent said, why is the cemetery the grass dead? Why is it not green? Why is there mud all over headstones? So I go out there. Well, then I learned some, some things like, hey, we're either going to do these ceremony, these funerals and dig plots. We can't do both. Why? We got limited. We're a small cemetery district. We don't have money to bring on extra help. Um, it's the landscape of funerals. Okay, that I could get with. So then I come back, just like any other issue, talk to the CAO, talk to some of my board members, or one board member, and, uh, we figure out a way that are ARPA funds eligible to help with the negative impact of the pandemic, in this case, more funerals? Yes. Okay, if it's happening to Corcoran, it's not a special case. Reach out, and we reached out to Lamoore, Hanford, all the other cemetery districts. That's how they got the money. Plus, politically, I knew my board members weren't going to give me a, a yes vote on a hundred thousand just for Corcoran, so we had to look at theirs too. So there's two things there. But when you look at the professional procedural way of looking at it, if one cemetery district's getting impacted, of course, they all are. And so the board saw that, and we invested the money, and we helped. To go on here in a grand jury report and say, no audits were done. They know that in the case of Corcoran, audits were done. Now they tell you the grand jury, don't talk about what we talked about. Well, if you're going to do a report, put in some of the things we talked about respectfully. All right, this is the issue that frustrates me very much because it's taken a lot of my time. This right here, we know that Eric went down to the Corcoran Cemetery District. That's not in here. He conducted an audit on the ARPA funds. He saw some red flags. He met with the manager. The board is, um, now having to do an audit, and guess who's paying for it? They are. And we're waiting on that. And there's some other things taking place related to that that I'm not going to talk about, but the grand jury knows about it. So I'm only saying, it's not a hit to the grand jury, but it's a lot of my work here. And if we're going to do a letter, then let's do it right. Some respectful requests that we, um, table this to next week. The deadline's October sixth. We meet next Tuesday, but I want some language in here because this letter is going to go to a judge. And if this is going to be factual, I want some facts put, um, but, um, put in, into this letter and some correcting of the record. Other than that, I do thank the grand jury because guess what? How many headlines have we seen of people who've gone to jail for misusing this money? You, you know, some counties gave people money, came to podiums and had the sad story. Then you see they went and they bought a damn Porsche, and no offense to Porsche. I mean, no, at least they didn't get a Corvette, but they probably got Corvette suit. But, uh, but you know, we've all seen people get in trouble. So yes, the grand jury, you are right in this. But I would like some of the work done. If we're going to put, take the time to do it, then let's make it factual and then, and let's outline it. So respectfully, if we could table this, and I'm happy to meet with, um, staff to give more detail on some, some of the things I'd like to see in this letter so the board could take it up. But right now, this makes us look bad. I do appreciate that staff, um, disagrees on some of the things that the, um, grand jury, um, put in there. So there are some disagreements in there, so I'm not adding on, on some of the things that I'm saying.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other comments? We have a motion to table. Second on the motion. We have a motion, and I don't care.
Let's just correct the record. There's, there's just a few things I need to better than that. Seven hours of days.
Madam clerk, call the roll.
Joe Nevs. Richard Valley. Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Robert Thayer.
Yeah.
Uh, one no and four yeses. Thank you. But we'll bring it back at a later date with, uh.
It will have to be back on the agenda for next Tuesday to meet the deadline.
Okay, good to know. Thank you, madam. Matthew.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Matthew Boye, Deputy County Administrative Officer, Kings County Administration. So before you this morning is our formal adoption to go ahead and, uh, formalize and adopt our fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, county budget. So roughly a month ago, we were before, um, your board on August twenty-fifth to conduct our final budget hearings. Um, with at the conclusion of that, your board gave a temporary due pass across all budget units with, uh, direction to bring back a resolution to go ahead and adopt, uh, what was presented. So this is a kind of a miscellaneous procedural piece that finalizes and formalizes the budget here, and everything that is in this resolution here is as it was as presented on August twenty-fifth, uh, twenty twenty-five during final budget hearings. So with that, we have total appropriations of government funds of five hundred and eighteen million, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars. Total means of financing of five hundred and twenty million, one hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars, and total appropriations for contingencies at thirty-seven million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars. And with that, the recommendation before your board is to adopt the resolution approving the final fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six Kings County budget. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Moved by Sue by the nerves, second by Sue by the fair.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Robert Thayer.
Thank you.
Before we go to the next item, I didn't ask the audience on the grand jury report if they had a comment. Does the audience have a comment on the grand jury item? Oh, that one, sorry. Victor.
Um, real quick, uh, my name is Victor Schabrin, Jr. I'm here in my personal capacity. Uh, in twenty twenty-one, I was a member of the Armona Community Service District. Um, and I just want to say that I, I don't want us to demonize, uh, the, the, the funding that was provided from the board of supervisors to community service district. Uh, that sixty-six thousand or, or that amount, uh, went to help the district survive that year fiscally. Um, and I know that's the same for other special districts. Uh, I remember that year, we, we specifically went to Supervisor Peterson, uh, who was in office at the time and said, this is a huge issue for us. Uh, special districts were the only, uh, government agency that was left out of ARPA funding. And so that was huge that the county stepped in and supported us in that effort. Um, and so don't, I don't want that to be ignored, and I want to thank you for continuing to look out for our special districts like Supervisor Valley said. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to the next item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So before you this morning is the appointment of Rick Bradford to the position of the Kings County Sheriff effective November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. The position of the sheriff is an elected position responsible for overseeing and directing all operations and services provided by the Kings County Sheriff's Office. The sheriff is responsible for planning, developing, and blending programs and projects, as well as being accountable for achieving objectives and aligning operations with broader county goals by, with established policy guidelines. Sheriff Dave Robinson was elected in January second, twenty twenty-three as sheriff for a six-year term. Sheriff Robinson delivered to the board his letter of resignation dated August sixth. His letter of resignation states that the position of sheriff will be vacated effective Monday, November twenty-fourth of this year. The position of sheriff is subject to the requirements under California Government Code, section twenty-three, three, zero, four, which states that the board of supervisors shall fill vacancies by the appointment. As such, the board needs to appoint a sheriff with an effective date of Monday, November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, for the remainder of the Sheriff Robinson's term until the next election, which will not occur until twenty twenty-eight. Rick Bradford currently serves, serves as the Kings County UnderSheriff. Under Sheriff Bradford is the second-in-command in the absence of the sheriff and currently oversees patrol, detective, civil administration, records, animal services, coroner, evidence, water rescue, backgrounds, canine, SWAT, hostages, hostage negotiations, jail, dispatch, bailiff services, and alternative sentencing. Under Sheriff Bradford is a Lamoore High School graduate. He holds various peace officer service and training certificates, including but not limited to the supervisory and media and management post certificates. He began his employment with Kings County in August twenty-first of nineteen ninety-five as a deputy sheriff, too, coming from the Lamoore Police Department. He promoted through the ranks at the sheriff's office to senior deputy sheriff on March eighth, nineteen ninety-nine, sheriff sergeant on July seventh, two thousand and three, sheriff commander on October seventeenth, two thousand and eleven, and assistant sheriff on April third of twenty twenty-three. Gosh, this is a lot. And into his current position of undersheriff on November eleventh of twenty twenty-four. Appointing a familiar, familiar and capable leader will stabilize the department while the county prepares for the formal election in twenty twenty-eight. Under Sheriff Bradford has worked for Kings County Sheriff's Office for over thirty years and bring extensive operational institutional knowledge to the position of the sheriff. Therefore, it is recommended that the board appoint Rick Bradford to the position of the Kings County Sheriff effective Monday, uh, November twenty-fourth through the remainder sheriff, Sheriff Robinson's current term. Compensation benefits are not included before the board. The sheriff compensation will be presented, um, in a future later board date. So at this time, we respectfully ask the board to confirm the appointment of Rick Bradford to the position of Kings County Sheriff effective November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Staff and I are available to answer any questions, and I believe Sheriff Robinson has a few comments.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Not sure what our current sheriff's going to do for next six and a half weeks.
Well, I could let you in on a little secret. It's not going to be coming to work every day.
Well, now that we have that on our record.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for having me this morning. Dave Robinson, your Kings County Sheriff. I'm the fifteenth sheriff in the history of Kings County, and, uh, I'm the second longest sheriff in the history of Kings County. Orby Clyde was the longest. Um, and, and so I'm honored to be here today, and I'm honored to recommend Rick to your board, and I, I'm just thankful that we're here today, and, and I look forward to it. So just a, a few tidbits of information. This morning, Tiffany in our office gave me a little flag through Cassie that said, Rick's our pick. So I, I've been wearing this this morning, my little flag that Rick's their pick. So, um, Rick and I started, I, you know, at the same year in nineteen ninety-five for the sheriff's office. I started in the jail, he started in patrol, and then I later came out to patrol. And when I came out to patrol, uh, my ID number is two ninety-nine, Rick's ID number is two ninety-eight. And so it's only fitting that as sheriffs, I'm fifteen, and he's now going to be sixteen. So we get to flip-flop who has seniority here, and, uh, so I'm looking forward to that. The history of the sheriff's office is, is long and strong, and, and, um, you know, I'm proud to be here, and I'm proud to have been your sheriff for almost fifteen years. And, uh, sixty-one days left, and I told Rick after today, if, if your board supports this, that, um, those sixty-one days will really translate into a lot less workdays. Um, because I'm just not going to be around a lot. Rick has taken on a lot of things, especially this last year that I'm super proud of. And, um, and a lot of the meetings that I normally take on, um, Rick's been going to, which I really appreciate. So I hope you guys settle his salary, uh, soon, so that way he actually gets paid for the extra work that I've been throwing at him the last few months.
We have to wait for next sixty-one days.
Right. Whatever. I'm still leaving. You know, whatever you guys do, you guys do. Um, and so it's been an honor and a privilege to, to serve as your sheriff. I gotta give a shout out real quick if I could divert to Daryl. Like, for making the drive up to talk about catalytic converter theft, you know, we chatted in the back of the room about the copper theft that also goes on, which is in the same ballpark. And so, Daryl, thank you for doing that. Like, it's really important. I know your board's considering the ordinance. You've already requested stats from us, which the undersheriff graciously provided because I didn't, he did the work. And so I hope that does come back before your board, and I hope you adopt that ordinance and we move forward with it. We had fifty-five catalytic converter thefts that the sheriff's office took from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-five, uh, to the value of about ninety-four thousand dollars. That's just the sheriff's office. So I see a couple of our local council members here. When you add in Hanford, Lamoore, Corcoran, Avonel, CHP, that's going to be a significant number in Kings County alone. And so, um, you know, without going too far off, off center.
It's only become popular to still, because someone buying them.
Right.
With the new tools, with the lithium batteries, you can take a, a catalytic rear off in less than a minute.
Correct. Exactly.
We, we're working against technology and working against buying them, so we need to make it illegal to purchase.
Yeah, so a local ordinance can go a long way for us in law enforcement to accomplish that. And so I really appreciate him coming up and making those comments because it is super important. I know your board has talked about it before, and, and we do like to work through the legislature, and we hope that they pass great legislation for us. Um, but in this case, catalytic converter theft case and also copper wire theft, they just don't. They don't want to see more people go to jail, and it's unfortunate because that's how we get back on track in society sometimes. But, okay, I'll go back to the sheriff thing. So Rick is an outstanding person. I've known him my whole career. Um, we work closely together. Uh, we worked in detectives together for several years, and we spent many countless nights working all night long, chasing bad guys, murder suspects, rape suspects, et cetera. And, uh, you know, honestly, he's a great person for this role. If you look back the history of the sheriff's office, there have been numerous appointments to sheriffs when a sheriff leaves early in their term. It wasn't my intention to leave early, but when the legislature and the governor decided to add two more years to the DA and the sheriff race, um, I, I wasn't committed to that. I opposed that legislation because I was ready to retire after a four-year term, not a six-year term. But they did it. We're still here, and, uh, so Rick's going to, you know, do a great job for you all for three years, and I'm honored to just support him in any way I can. Um, I will be there for him if he needs anything during that time. Now, granted, I may take a few days to call him back, but I'll be there for him. And, uh, so I think he'll do an outstanding job. Um, I've told a couple of you, but I'll say it here in public, he has no intention of running in twenty twenty-eight. It's going to be a wide-open election. I, I hope and pray that we get some amazing candidates, and, you know, I hope that a couple of them are internal candidates from the sheriff's office because I think that, uh, when you come from the sheriff's office, there's just a different mentality towards law enforcement here in Kings County because you have to care about the entire county. Um, and, and that's not taking anything away from the cities, but when you, when you work in the sheriff's office, you're involved in everything, big, little, small, and inside cities and outside cities. It's not just the unincorporated areas. And, uh, and so I, I really, you know, I'm really hoping and praying that in twenty twenty-eight we get some amazing candidates to come forward to take this to the next level. And maybe some of them will actually take over second place and even first place, but Orby Clyde did it for, uh, thirty years. And, uh, so that one's going to be a tough one to beat. So, um, I'll stop there if you have any questions of me. But at the end of the day, I absolutely support this, and, and I hope your board does as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before, before we move on to, to the, uh, appointment, um, you mind, but Sheriff One, thank you again for your service.
Rick, you're going to be called down.
We're going to have a lot more to say about your standing career later, but I'm glad you touched a little bit on, on the, uh, procedure here. Can, uh, there's probably going to be a lot of questions. So for transparency.
Yeah.
Can you outline for the public, um, one, uh, for example, I always thought that the board of supervisors would appoint, um, an elected official's replacement, even with a sheriff, but we learned that that's not the case. So when I say appoint, uh, we're going to do that today, but I meant where we would open it up for other people to apply.
Yeah.
They get vetted, then there would be a vote. Uh, can you, for the public, can you tell why that's not happening? And it may be a little bit of what the public can expect as we move to twenty twenty.
Yeah, absolutely, and I appreciate you bringing that up. So we all learn stuff in this job every day, and, you know, when I, um, when I decided to retire, I thought I knew what I knew about, oh, how, how this whole replacement thing would work. And of course, then, um, you get the attorneys involved, and they're really smart people sometimes, most of the time, actually. And, um, and so of course, county council got involved and came back with their opinion of like, hey, here's how the, the process has to work based on case law, based on attorney general opinions, and based on the state constitution. And so with that said, um, the board was limited in what you could do because there was discussion at one point, and I even said it myself, that you could have called for a special election. Well, we found that out through county council's research that you can't call for a special election. Um, I wasn't aware that the undersheriff automatically became the, um, the leader of the agency in the absence of the sheriff or if the sheriff stepped aside. And so that's, that's written in the books as well, where it automatically goes to the undersheriff, and the board's, um, input on it is limited. Not that you couldn't go outside of that, but it really, it did limit the scope of what authority you had to do. And in the interest of, you know, really having the voters decide, um, what's laid before you today is really the best approach to allow the voters to decide in twenty twenty-eight. And, and hopefully I've explained that well enough, but, um, I really do appreciate county council, county admin. Somebody asked me, why'd you tell everybody so early? You know, a lot of people wait until like, give their two-week notice. Um, but I did it because I wanted to make sure that your board, county admin, county council all had time to look at this because the last time that this happened in Kings County, I think, was two thousand five. when Alan McLean was appointed to replace Ken Marvin. And then prior to that, it'd been, you know, I think twenty years. And so it's good that these things come up sometimes and, but yeah, it, it, your, your scope of authority was more limited than I expected once County Council was able to do the research on it. Thank you.
Very good. Any other comment?
Supervisor, Mr. Sheriff, I may just wanted to confirm. Thank you, Sheriff. Uh, yeah, this process is dictated by state law, and so we did, um, do that research. The Board of Supervisors, they can see by appointment and no special election.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Bradford, you want to come down? Either confirm or deny that you are willing to do the job? Okay, all right. All right, all right. With that, do we have a motion? Yeah. By the, by the NAF, second by, uh, by their Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Anybody else?
Oh, absolutely not, man. I'm kidding you. Chairman, Members of the Board, Mark Kyra, City, Hanford. I, I, I just want you, you know, the sheriff outlayed, you know, everything to you appropriately, and, and it's, it's an interesting set of circumstances that we're in. And the sheriffs will leave in early, but I want to tell you this gentleman standing to my left is our choice. For our community to have somebody that's been dedicated to this department for this number of years to be able to step up and take the, the challenge that's coming forward. I was honored to serve beside him for many years in, in my career, and this is a great choice. So I, I just, without saying, I think it's important to get up and let us know and let him know that he has the support of the community and hopefully of this board. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to say something?
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Scott Hallwell, Public Guardian, Veteran Service Officer. Uh, and I know it's strange that I might be standing up here saying something, but many may not know that Rick is a Marine Corps veteran, served the Marine Corps honorably. And so if there's any doubt that his heart is with his country and with his community, let there be no doubt to that. And I say Marine Corps veteran. Some people say ex-marine, and then I, you know, I get beat up in the back room for that because there's no such thing as an ex-marine. So, Rick, for what it's worth, thank you for your service, simplify, and look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chief.
Yeah, fun fact, fun fact, and Rick can share it too, that I don't, I don't remember which inauguration it was for Ronald Reagan, but Rick Bradford is a Marine, escorted Ronald Reagan to, to the podium at his, at one of his inaugurations. And so he was White House dude. He was the guy that saluted you when you walked in and out of the White House. So it was either eighty or eighty-four. Very good. Any other comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Jonathan Brewster, DSA President, uh, just like to echo everybody else's comments. And then also we support the little flag. Rick's our pick. So with that, I'll let him.
Thank you.
Make me nervous, coach, every time you pin my.
Madam DA.
Hey, everybody. It's always a pleasure to talk to this board. I did want to extend my deepest gratitude to the Sheriff, Sheriff Robinson. It has been a, a pleasure and an honor to serve side by side with you as the county's constitutional officer. And I really look forward to working side by side with Rick. I can't imagine a better choice, Rick. Bismuth. And thank you very much for stepping up. Appreciate it.
Very good. Anybody else? Saying none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Braboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert Thayer.
Absolutely. Five in favor. Sheriff Bradford, we'd like to see a few words.
I don't think I have much of a choice, but thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. First person I want to thank is, of course, Sheriff Robinson. We had a long career together. It's great. I, I feel great that he has confidence. Let me take his legacy finish line, which I'm very proud to do. And of course, to the board, to Kiria, thank you for your confidence in me. A lot to say. You're going to realize I don't talk too much in front of you guys, so let's get that out right now.
We appreciate that.
But thank you, guys. I appreciate it. I'll talk to you. Any questions?
I'd like to say a couple of words. One, I know I've become highly recommended by the sheriff. That, that goes a long ways. And in learning a couple of months ago, one of the first things that he, that he told me about you was that you are a Marine. And so with that, you know, your integrity to me is just accepted on, on day one. So when the sheriff talks about how you've already, you, you've, you've stated that you're not going to run in two thousand and twenty-eight, that makes it, that makes, I think that makes it easier on today's process too, for the fact that, you know, there are going to be a lot of other folks who, who want an opportunity
Right.
to, uh, to run on that. So whether you do or not, but like with politics, they say never say never.
I'm saying never.
Yeah. Well, well, this is the exception when
My wife will allow me to go anywhere.
The sheriff said, the sheriff says, well, you know, one of the good things is he's not going to run, so takes the politics side. I said, Sheriff, never say never, right? In, in politics. And then he said, Richard, he's a Marine. And I said, well, in that case, I'll accept that never say never, because I would never accept it from nobody else. But, and then to learn this morning that you're an eighth and I Marine. So for people who don't know, eighth and I Marine, I mean, you got Marines, and you got the eighth and I Marine. And so once, once you graduate boot camp and get into the Marine Corps, you could apply to be an eighth and I Marine, just like you could apply to say, I want to go to drill instructor school.
Back in my day, it didn't work that way. Back in my day.
That was your MOS right out of boot?
My MOS is infantry. So I went to infantry school in Camp Lejeune. And during infantry school, Marines came from eighth and I and picked thirteen of us. And out of the thirteen, we interviewed and they sent three of us to Washington.
Okay. Now, because the point I was trying to make was, what year was that? Because that was ninety-three, ninety-three. Eighty-three, okay.
I'd rather not say that, but.
Well, just some of the things I heard, ninety through ninety-six. One, there's Marines who want to be eighth and I Marines, and they, and they can't. Because there's, there's some either off manual things that's not in front. One, you got to have a certain look. And you, you got, you got to be in shape, and you got to look the best in that. It's those Marine Corps dress blues, and those Marine Corps dress blues, you got to look be- better than the guy on the recruiting poster. So that goes a long ways that, that, that you took that up there, that, that way. And, and I just, I want to end with this too, as, as, as Marine. I think it's fitting that, one, I'm not sure if you're the first Marine veteran sheriff in the history of Kings County, that would be cool to, to find out. But nevertheless, we, you know, the county's about to get a Marine Corps veteran as the sheriff. And, and as you know, sir, that, the Marines, we have a Marines hymn, a beloved song that we sing. And the last verse of that is, if the Army and the Navy ever looked on heaven's scenes, they would find the streets are guarded by United States Marines. And today, United States Marines going to become the sheriff of Kings County. So we were all sympathize.
Thanks. Simplify. Thank you.
Thank you. Saying no more questions. Got that done. We'll go on now to the study session, item six A, Behavioral Health Department. Dr. Lewis.
Hello, Lisa Lewis, Kings County Behavioral Health Department, and we will pass this off to Mark to get going today. We're going to make our presentation from the Kings County Homeless Collaborative. This is our annual report. Mark?
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. Chair Braboon, Members of the Board, we're back again, as promised. I'm here serving as your chair of the Kings County Homelessness Collaborative. This is our presentation to you for our annual report. When I came, when I was elected to office in two thousand and twenty-two, this was a, an issue that was near and dear to my heart. How do, how do we improve our community? How do, how do we make things better? And so I, I got involved with the Homeless Collaborative, and I got to meet some wonderful, wonderful people, and there's a lot of them in this room. Dr. Lewis, Mr. Gardner, I can go on the list. We'll go, you'll see it as part of the presentation here of everyone that's involved. But I can tell you, I'm honored to sit in that meeting every month with these men and women that have come together. And you'll see as our presentations, we go through today, we've made some great progress. And in five short years since the Board of Supervisors adopted the collaborative, we, we've made some great progress. And, and there's some great things coming on the horizon, and we're going to give you a brief update on that today. So without further ado, we'll go through the slideshow. And so our next slide is just kind of a, you know, why we're here. And that was, the collaborative was formed by the Board of Supervisors in two thousand and nineteen. And as part of that, we, we said, and we made a promise to you that we would come every year and give you an update on where we stand, our, our shortfalls, our, our, you know, things that we've accomplished. And so those are the things that, you know, are important, keep you involved because of your support for the collaborative's been critical. So we're here to, to, today to present the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five annual report to you, the Board of Supervisors. Just give you a snapshot of, of the successes that we've had and what we're doing moving forward. Next slide. So again, the collaborative's composed of member appointments from government agencies, elected officials, housing service providers, community members. I got to tell you, I think there, as we sit right now, we have sixteen full-time or, or board member positions. And we meet monthly. Those meetings are open to the public. They're professionals like Dr. Lewis and her staff, as well as professionals in the service provider area in the community. There's electeds that serve on this, this collaborative. And it's really, I didn't know what to expect when I came in, you know, almost three years ago now, what to say. And, and I would like to, before I kind of go any further, thank Supervisor Nevs. He's, he's been a staunch supporter of the collaborative and, and a board member for many years. And since its inception, and we're going to keep moving forward, and, and it's nice to have those voices. And I'm sure he shares some things we do as, as we go throughout the year as well. But we've got a lot of great things to share with you today, and I, I promise I won't take too long. And our purpose is advising assist the county's effort to address homelessness issues affecting our community as, as, as a county, but not only as the county, but as municipalities, okay? Whether it's City Hanford, Corcoran, Avonel, doesn't matter. It's, it's impacting all of us. And what can we do as a collaborative group to, to improve upon that? This next slide, these are the people that are doing the work. As you, as you sit down and you look at the individuals' names that are on this board, we, we have, you know, we have stakeholders that dedicate a lot of time outside of their normal duties and outside of their normal profession to get together, sit down, have the conversations and have the hard talk. What can we do to get better? What can we do to provide things to the community? So here's a list of those board members. And it's, it's a very diverse group. And it's funny, when you get this diverse group in a room, how much we can get done. And it's, and you will, you'll see that as we move forward. So thank you to all these board members. It's critical that, in our success moving forward, to have these stakeholders and putting forth their hard efforts. So our goals for the collaborative was create community engagement. That was your goal to us. We've done that. We've got the stakeholders in the room. We've got the people that, you know, can, that have the voice and the dedication and the work and the hard, you know, giving the hard commitment to, to move things forward. So we have that. Expand permanent supportive housing and rapid housing to address high rates of single adults experiencing homelessness. This is the challenge, right? We all know it. I don't care what community we're in. I don't care what municipality, and we lack affordable housing. And those, these are things that the collaborative works on. It gives me an opportunity as a council member for the City Hanford to go back to my staff, as well as Supervisor Nevs, to come back to you and say, hey, what are we doing here? What can we do to make some affordable housing available to the community? This is the challenge. And Dr. Lewis will get into a little more of that as we move forward. Establish a little barrier shelter. You know, when I, when I came on the, the collaborative, it was like a dream. Well, if you're here as part of this presentation, that dream is coming to fruition. We're going to be breaking ground on that hopefully in the first two thousand and twenty-six. So in two and a half short years, and you know, in government work, that's pretty quick, two and a half short years, by the support of the Board of Supervisors, the cities, and these hardworking individuals, this is going to come to fruition for our community. And I'm, I'll allow Mr. Gardner to share that information as we move on. Coordinate standardized homeless outreach. Well, there's so many people in, in the, the list, isn't just the list that are provided, but there are so many individuals that work behind the scenes that provide that outreach. Whether it's the point in time count, whether it's going out and making contact with those, the homeless. How, how, how did you become homeless? Why are you homeless? What can we do to help you? What, here's the services that are available. These are the people that are dealing with them day in, day out. And that connectivity is critically important to the success of getting somebody out of homelessness. It's building that relationship, it's building that trust, and all that, all those components come into play, and I think that's the most important thing for us. We want to deepen structure for coordination of homeless response in Kings County, and I think we're doing that. There's things we can improve upon. We're, it's, we're still fairly new as a, as a group in five short years, but, but we've, we've accomplished a lot, and we have a lot more to go to, to move things forward. But what I will personally ask is of the board, please continue to support us, which I know you do. I will promise as being your chair of the collaborative, I will promise to every year come and give you an update as long as I'm here. Or even if I'm not here, somebody will be here to provide that update to you that we promised you. And that's critical because in that way you can share the information. So you were provided the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five annual report. Hopefully you've had a chance to review it. There's some great information in there, and we're going to let each and everyone kind of talk about their specifics moving forward. And then at the end, I will avail myself and the rest of the board to answer any questions. So moving forward, Dr. Lewis.
I think.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, Letitia.
Hi, good morning. Letitia Housset, Executive Director of the Kings-Tollary Homeless Alliance. Thank you for having us here. I will go over some point in time numbers for two thousand and twenty-five. Our point in time is our annual census of people who are experiencing homelessness. We do it every January, towards the end of January. It is required by HUD. And so we did see a twenty-seven percent decrease in Kings County of the overall homeless count. So declining from four hundred and twelve in two thousand and twenty-four to three hundred and two in two thousand and twenty-five. That's a really, really important decrease. And I know Dr. Lewis will go over some numbers, I think, but we, we were able to house quite a bit of folks in the last year. And I think it shows with our decrease. We also saw some steep declines, some improvements and patterns. Here, we saw a decrease in, forty-one percent decrease in women, seventy-six percent decrease in families, and seventy-two percent decrease in children experiencing homelessness. Those fleeing domestic violence, we saw a decrease in seventy-four percent from two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-five. And those experiencing homelessness, sleeping on the street, we saw a decrease of twenty-five percent. Veterans, we saw a decrease of forty-eight percent from two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-five. And those experiencing homelessness with self-reported substance use disorder, we did see a decrease, a thirty percent decrease from two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-five. Those experiencing homelessness with self-reported HIV/AIDS, that was a hundred percent decrease from two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-five. So we didn't count anyone who had HIV or AIDS. This is a self-reported survey. And so we didn't have anyone in that category. The next slide. Thank you. And then we saw some notable increases in several areas. So we did see an increase of thirty-one percent of people who were chronically homeless, that, that did increase from last year. Self-reported mental illness, we saw a seventeen percent increase. Reports citing lack of affordable housing as a reason for homelessness jumped by eighty-six percent. So we do ask folks, what is your number one reason for being homeless? And over the past years, we have similar responses, and this one has been one of the top responses, lack of affordable housing. Homelessness among older adults grew by seventeen percent with those aged seventy and over. So that is a dramatic increase of four hundred percent. And so we did have over sixty to probably eighty folks conducting this point in time. It is volunteer work. We do it from around seven AM throughout the day for a full week. We come together afterwards to discuss on Zoom because we're scattered in different sites in Kings County to discuss if we need to go out and maybe work to count other folks. So we do really make sure that we comb the streets and talk to folks and make sure that we're counting correctly and providing the data for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Letitia.
I just want to. Quick question, can I, Doctor? Yes. Just on the point in time count, the, the, the jump to eighty-five or eighty-six percent for affordable housing, is that, when, 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 when the question's posed, is it a fill in the blank or they're like? Or they're like, you know, option A, affordable housing, option B, drug use or whatever.
It's a fill in the blank.
An important question. Thank you. Yes. So about two years ago, we, a couple of years ago, we made a change with the point in time count teams. And we added someone from the behavioral health team onto, onto every pit count team. And within the homeless collaborative, we have a couple of work groups. And one of them is the Kings County Homeless Collaborative Community Solutions Work Group. And two years ago, so in 2024, last year, they completed a survey of unhoused as a supplemental question during the pit count. So we were able to ask specific questions. Last year we reported on this, that we had done it and how many people had answered. But we didn't have all the specific answers to give you at that time. So I'm going to give them to you now. There were 219 people who were unhoused who completed the survey, of which 96% stated they were living on the street or the sidewalk. So they were unsheltered. And 78% had been unhoused for one year or longer. The top reason for their homelessness, 20% indicated an argument. 16% indicated unemployment, 11% eviction, 11% divorce and 10% lack of affordable housing. I think that's very interesting because it's very common for us to think that of job loss would be the main reason that people might become homeless. But if you add divorce to argument, that's 31% of those we interviewed had a breach in a relationship that caused, that they attributed to that lost the cause of their homelessness. The top personal reasons that prevented them from becoming housed, housed after they were homeless, 51% said limited to no income as a main reason, with everything else falling below 10%. The type of outreach services they would like, 43% said housing. 11% said anything, 8% food, 6% employment, 5% a job and 27% declined to answer. When asked about shelter preferences, 74% answered yes to shared housing, 66% to a 90-day shelter, 56% to overnight shelter. When asked, once they were housed, what kind of services do they need? 16% said a job, 14% said ongoing housing, 14% said additional resources. When asked how a service organization can help the individual solve their homelessness, the top response, 19% was housing. 18% jobs, 16% resources and 14% anything, food, education, other resources. When asked what the individual thought was the most effective way to address homelessness in Kings County, the themes that were emerged, 35% responded that housing is the number one way to address homelessness. 24% community resources and 20% said kindness and being treated like humans. And 12% said job skills, 4% said money and 3% said mental health care or food. So next slide, please. So when we look at the accomplishments, really the key accomplishments, a 27% reduction in homelessness per the 2025 pit count as compared to 23 and 24 is a significant accomplishment for our county. It shows that the work that we have been done, much of it, which came to fruition in housing in that year, had a direct cause and effect relationship. In the years that we don't bring new housing online, you know, we don't necessarily expect to see that kind of a reduction, but we hope that we can continue to see some reduction and at least stabilization. Additionally, we had 94 permanent supportive housing units come online within the county. And we launched the first behavioral health bridge housing to the county, which included 27 units. Hundreds assisted in housing the homeless and, and offering homeless prevention supports. 259 county families were assisted through Kings County Health and Human Services Agency, CalWorks Temporary Housing Programs. 374 individuals and households were assisted through the Kings County Behavioral Health Funded Programs. And 541 individuals exited the continuum of care coordinated entry system into stable housing. So I'll now turn it on, over to Jeff to take it a little further.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, Jeff Garner, Executive Director of KC AO. Been on the collaborative since 2019 and we definitely appreciate the support that you've given us along that way. We do know Kings County is a special county and this collaborative, I think, just elevates that as well because we do have the strong network of service providers that, that team up and work together. We're a phone call away, we're an email away. Sometimes we're a grocery store visit away from running into each other and just talking about what we can do to better enhance our county. So what I wanted to share with you were just some things across the county, not just with KC AO, but with a lot of the amazing service providers we have here in Kings County and those accomplishments. So the first off, we do have an amazing outreach team that goes out. Champions as well as other service providers are a part of that. We've grown from five individuals as a county to 20 individuals that go out and do street outreach. We do have some of those individuals that are here today and I just want to recognize them. Frank Ruiz is in the back, the Executive Director of Champions, as well as his crew that is here. So they definitely do the heavy lifting when it comes to making those connections with the homeless population. And I don't know if he'll still be parked out there, but the new shower trailer is out in the parking lot. And so that's quite amazing and it gives an opportunity to provide individuals who are experiencing homelessness, an opportunity for dignity and having the chance to, things that we take for granted, like a warm shower, they get to have that as part of that new shower trailer that Champions brought on. So great job there, Frank. Also, the Kings County Office of Education launched the Dream Center on Dowdy Street. It is for homeless individuals who are part of the school system. It's an opportunity for them to get connected to resources. A lot of them come through the foster care system. And so they are taking steps to, in their ballpark, to address the homeless challenges as well. And then KC AO, we're continuing to work on building a 200-bed emergency shelter. We're going to be breaking ground in January 2026 with the plans to open the first phase in 2024, March 2020, I'm sorry, 2027. We definitely appreciate the support the board supervisors have given us through the investment of this project, but also speaking at a level where community members can understand what we're trying to accomplish through this project. So we do appreciate your support there. And last but not least, you heard from Letitia Hinojosa from KTHA, but they've been creative in building out a landlord mitigation program. And that really is to work with these landlords who are extending themselves to help house the individuals who are homeless to provide fair market rent. And so this program gives them an opportunity of some security to where if there's damage to the property, if there's a gap in rent, then we can step in through KTHA and provide that security to the landlords. So really is a lot of different angles here. But when it comes to addressing our homeless community, it's just not one magic solution. So we really got to find different ways to address it and this is some of those examples in this last year. So thank you very much. And I'll turn it back over to Mark. Thank you.
So what's our work in progress? So we were talking this morning a little bit out in the hallway and we, we talked about low hanging fruit, right? When the collaborative was started and we talked about, you know, got everyone in a room, started having the discussions, we saw some great opportunities and, and progress to be made and, and those progresses have been made. But we've captured that low hanging fruit. So now we got to look, how do we elevate ourselves as a collaborative as we move forward? How do we start picking the fruit at the top as we can go get higher? And that's where the challenge comes in. So I say that in that, yes, there was a reduction in point in time count over last year. There's some great things on the horizon, but that, that momentum of that ball, although it will keep moving, may not be moving as quickly as it is right now. And that's because of the hard work. Now, it comes into funding, right? And that's the challenge. How do we get some funding? And we, we as a group, as a collaborative, have to figure out, how can we tap into some of that state funding that's available? How can we get some things done? We want to support KC AO with the Low Barrier Shelter Navigation Food Center, Centralized Kitchen. We want all that project to be supportive in the community. But all those things as it come forward is going to start to be more and more of a challenge. So yes, there's some great positives. Yes, we're moving forward. And, but just understand as the annual reports come forward, the momentum that you see as that low hanging fruit gets plucked, might start slowing down a little bit. But we, I promise as a, as a collaborative and as a group of people that meet every single month, we will work together to keep that ball moving forward. So some of the things that are, you know, work in progress, the continued development of Low Barrier Shelter, that's critical for our community and for our county as a whole. The location is going to be 10th and Hanford on Warner Road. You've heard that before. I can't thank Mr. Gardner and KC AO enough, the hard work and the dedication that, that they've put into this project. And not all, on top of all the other things they do on an annual or daily basis, it's just mind blowing for me. That's going to be, that's going to be a critical component. So part, how did some of that numbers reduce? Well, when we start talking about Sunrise Apartments, we start talking about those successes. We were able to give some housing to some individuals. Now, there's other opportunities on the horizon. We'll keep moving forward that. But you know, it, we're going to, we're going to need to compete, the community support to move forward. And that will all come through Jeff and the collaborative working together to make sure that it gets accomplished. Create communication strategy for homelessness and the Kings County Homelessness Collaborative. I, I, Frank, I know you're in the back room with Champions. This is, this is our connectivity, right? He's the, his organization, Champion Recovery, are the ones out doing the outreach day in, day out. So as he and I share thoughts, share our concerns, he expresses to me what his concerns are. I can share with him what the community's concerns are and we can start addressing those issues. But, but they are, you know, as well as other stakeholders in this group, the conduit of how all this communication is important. So we keep that going and I think that's, that will continue to show our success moving forward. Increase the Kings County Homeless Collaborative presence at city council meetings across the county. You know, now that we've gotten the report of the 2024 pit count, 2025, I guess, it was done in January. I'm going to be reaching out to each of the councils and the other municipalities in our county, Lemoore, Corcoran, Avenue. Go, go share this information with them. We need their involvement as well. Locally, it's kind of been us, the board supervisors, City Hanford and the people of the county staff that has worked so hard to achieve these successes. But we now need to get everyone kind of on board because this is, is something that impacts our entire county. So that's going to be my goal here and the remainder of this year is try to get out and get those presentations made. We talk about enhanced transportation planning, you know, Andrew Dye with CART is on our, is on our board. You know, we have, we have the people here. They're, they're putting in the work. So when we talk about transportation, how do we come up with a waiver to where it allows an individual who might be homeless to be able to get that transportation need? They're going to need to be able to get from that Low Barrier Shelter to their services in town. You know, taking, you know, the, the shower, the shower trailer of hope, I believe it's called, shower of hope. You know, dignity is important, you know, we all know it, you know? Being able to take a shower, feel good about ourselves, put on some clean clothes, all that stuff. You know, they're dealing with an environment all day long. You can see the smiles on their faces as they come out. So thanks to Champions for their hard work, their dedication. It's, it's been a phenomenal progress. So I don't want to take up too much time. You have all the information ahead of you. Dr. Lewis and I and, and the rest of the staff are here to answer any questions you might have. But in closing for me, thank you. Thank you to the board for your continued support. As your chair, I promise to, to keep you involved, keep you engaged and keep you informed as we move forward. So with that, I'll to answer any questions that you might have. Dr. Lewis, do you have anything you'd like that?
Thanks, Mark. And I'll turn it right back to you. I just wanted to take a minute to thank the county staff. When these opportunities come up for grant funding, oftentimes we have to write for them and this is a lot of work. And so staff in human services, behavioral health administration, many different departments put in the time to write for these grants. Oftentimes, you know, they're competitive, sometimes they're not competitive, but we still have to do the work to get them. And then we can pass them through to our partners in the community and that's what makes these things happen. So it's really our county staff who do a lot of this work. And very specifically, I want to thank Kristy Lucky. She's the one who brought together all the data and produced this report for your board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board, comments, the pleasure valley, also by the wrong team.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Chair. Thanks, sir. And thanks, ma'am, for the information. And I think I want to ask Mr. Reese to come to the podium as well on there. Cause one of the things that is very interesting, two things, the tracking of homeless with his outreach team and the shower. And so the, the simple, the simple question first is, has the shower gone to Corcoran yet? Is it too new? And if, and if not, how could I help? How could I help get, get it there and get it promoted? I, I could go talk to the right people to make sure that, that there's some people that have the trust of the homeless community in Corcoran. This person can, you know, can help promote that this shower is coming.
So yes, we do, we do have all the outlining areas as well. We do like to go to Corcoran Emergency Aid and we work with them. So we, we do go out there. It just depending on staff, how often we can get out there. I think we've been doing Corcoran like once or twice a month, but we do go to all the outlining areas for the shower trailer.
Corcoran Emergency Aid is a good spot. I'd recommend, I'd recommend Vice Mayor Pat Nolan. Reach out to her. If you don't, you don't have her number, I'm happy to give it to you. But she's, she's someone, she, she feeds the homeless a couple of times a week. She, she, she has good a, a contact with them, probably can help you with some folks that won't make that walk to the far west side of town at Emergency Aid, probably a more centralized area in Corcoran. And the second thing is, I know that's a difficult job tracking homeless. Cause even in Corcoran, honestly, I don't, I don't know where they're at. You don't see a lot. And you see like one or two walking uptown. But ever since the, the city council got together and figured out a way to shut down that homeless encampment at John Maru Park, that's where you would see, right, like 40 of them there. You see, you knew where they're at. So my point is to track them, they didn't all go away. Cause then, then after the hospital burned down across the street, I found out they were living on the roof over there. Now, but now I don't know where, where they're at. So.
Yeah. So one of the.
You guys should be in.
Yeah. We do like to get in touch with like your public works department because they're, you know, the people that do our trash service and those kinds of things, they're all over, all over the place, right? So they might see a little bit more than what we do. So I've instructed our team to always talk to, you know, the people of the city to see where they see them at. Because, you know, we can go out there one week and we find them in one spot, but then we go again and they're not there. So we try to, we try to keep a, keep, keep tabs on people, but it is difficult. So that information would probably be great and work really well for us.
And, and then lastly, Ms. Chair, one of the things that I think Corcoran experienced there, I'm not going to say his name, but there's a longtime homeless guy in Corcoran. Comes from really good families, parents were educators. And anyway, so he ends up on the street, probably the last 15 years. Everybody knows him. And, but to the point that's made, once they make a move and they leave the community, I could see how you can't get back because this guy somehow ended up in Bakersfield and he was there for months. And a whole community was worried about him on Facebook. Have you seen him? They put their pictures. And then so about six months go by, the other day, someone did a post with his picture and he looks scruffed up more than ever. Found him. He's in Bakersfield hanging around at this location. And then once they posted that, that thing went viral to our area because everyone was happy that the man was back. I, I saw him yesterday by McDonald's in Corcoran. I even stopped and talked to him and said, man, don't do that again. You had everybody worried, but you know, if any of us get on the train and go to Bakersfield, we're going to make it back. And a homeless person, if they somehow catch a ride or take off with the wrong person and they're stuck and they, and they cannot get back. So good job. You guys got a tough.
Wes Robinson.
One, one last comment. We are always looking to partner with other organizations and where we take our shower trailer out. We don't just want to park it anywhere in the community or just, we want to be usually doing it in collaboration. We've been partnering with local churches like the Salvation Army, the King, Hanford Pentecostal Church of God. We're, we're going to be partnering with the Methodist Church to be part of the shower ministry. We partnered with the Episcopal Church of the Savior and their soup kitchen. And so we like to partner with other organizations that have a heart for serving this population. So if they're in any, any of your communities that you're working, if there's an organization in the community that really wants to do an outreach, they can contact us and we would love to come out and see if we can support that by bringing our shower trailer or our outreach teams out there to, to help serve the community and, and the homeless. So if you know of any homeless out there, then please direct them to us. And we will do our best to serve them and help connect them to whatever services are available to them.
Very good. Wes Robinson.
My house, 7:30, shower's a little full, Frank. Just really a thank you to all of you. It's quite a collaborative effort, effort there. Honestly, you know, been to a few of, of the meetings and thought, boy, there's a lot of talk there. But actually behind the talk, I think we finally got some success. I heard a rumor. I'm not sure if this is correct. But actually behind the talk, I think we finally got some success. I heard a rumor. I'm not sure if this is correct. Largest homeless decrease in California? Nice work. Nice work. Jeff, I'm interested in an update on your project. Last I heard, it's a $22 million project. You almost had enough money at that time for your first phase. Where are we at?
Yes, the project cost estimate right now is $22 million. That's for all three phases, the low barrier shelter, centralized kitchen and the new food bank. Phase one is $8 million. We've gotten there. We're a little bit shy. We're rounding up, but we're almost are close to $8 million. It's been a bipartisan effort. It's been a county effort, a city effort. We've had a large donation come in for a million dollars from a local farmer. So it really has been a lot of folks who have contributed to the project. So we're working with our architect, going through the permitting process, or about to go through the permitting process with the city of Hanford and expect to break ground, January 2026. We were going to break ground this year, but we had to go through some environmental studies as part of the federal funding that we received for the project. So that delayed it about six months, but we've gotten through that. Everything is cleared. So we're feeling good about where the project is. We're going to be launching a capital campaign. We're going to be doing additional canvassing around the neighborhood, making sure community members are aware of all the details of the project as well as we're going to establish a neighborhood advisory council. And that we're going to have the local community members be part of the discussion when it comes to building as well as operating. So we're going to be gathering some folks to serve on that council as well.
I look forward to your first phase. One other, one other element, and I know sometimes this is a dirty word, but, but I don't think it is. Another stakeholder is the heart team in Hanford. And honestly, just a shout out to Korea and his team. I'm on the phone with him, I don't know, once every few months. And sometimes it's, it's an extensive conversation and he truly cares. And he's truly trying to find answers to individual questions, right? So sometimes it's relocating, sometimes it's finding community services, but he genuinely has a good heart, a heart team. And so he, he too is a stakeholder that I hope there's a little interaction with him because they, they genuinely want to help the individuals. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Jeff, the, being reminded about your project right now, I just, I sent you a link. There's a, there's an organization called Central Valley New Market Tax Credits. And I, I sit on that board with a number of other elected officials. And so I sit on the advisory board.
Okay.
So one of my jobs is to pitch projects that these new market tax credits can help fill some of your financial gaps in your, in your budget. But we did one, it's called Village of Hope out of Merced County, using new market and tax credits. It's 10,000 square foot respite, respite care facility. And so this tells me, just looking up at our projects, that what you're doing is something that more likely will qualify. We've done some projects in Kings County, Fresno, former Fresno city council member Oliver Banks, he's our chairman. I need to get you a meeting with all of that.
Oh yeah, please.
A F A P. So take a look at the link that I sent you and give me a call.
Okay, well, thank you supervisor.
Very good. Anybody else?
Okay, just a response, Chair, to Supervisor Robinson, you know, the heart team, and we talked about that and the critical component for the city of Hanford. And I want to thank the community of Measure H. Of course, as you know, the sales tax are already passed. Part of the Measure H public safety was to add additional heart officers, which we are in the process of doing. So we do have that collaboration with them. I, I'm in constant contact with the chief and the heart team members, you know, in, in interacting back and forth to get that information to share with the collaborative because they're the boots on the ground. They're just like these people in our room. They, they're the ones that are getting work done. So we'll, we'll keep moving forward with. So any other questions from?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
I think that's it. Thank you. And Supervisor Robinson, you're correct. We were the top county in the state of California. We found that out by a graphic that was sent out by the governor. I looked at it a couple of times. It listed multiple counties and it took me a few minutes, but realized, yeah, we were number one.
Very good. We'll move, this is just a study session, no action required. We'll move on now to study session number B, Community Development Agency. Senia, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors of the Board. Yes, Senia Karufa Planner with Kings County Community Development Agency. Here to present an update on the appointment of general plan advisory committee members or the G P A C members. Press release was issued on August 11th, 2025, inviting residents of Kings County to apply to serve on the G P A C, which will serve as a critical link between the public and county decision makers throughout the general plan and development code update that the county is currently undergoing. G P A C members will support public outreach efforts and help foster consensus on updates to important general plan elements, including land use, circulation, air quality and environmental hazards. It will also promote, promote community engagement by attending events and reporting regularly to the public. The G P A C will be comprised of at least 13, but no more than 21 residents, business owners and community leaders that will advise the planning commission and the board on community priorities, help translate complex planning concepts into real world impacts and act as ambassadors to encourage public involvement throughout the process. September 4th was the original deadline for application submissions. However, due to a shortage in those submissions, the deadline was extended to September 17th. In total, we received 14 applications. A list of the applicants was included with the agenda for this study session and was also provided to the clerk of the board. In our agenda item, we had originally encouraged each supervisor to select three applicants to represent each district so that everyone had the same number of members representing their district and so that the number of members was an odd number. Unfortunately, with only 14 applicants, not every supervisor will end up having the same number of members representing their district. However, we do still encourage to keep the number of members as an odd number to ensure a clear majority during the voting process. There's a board of supervisors meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, September 30th, 2025, in which we will return and recommend that the board appoints those members of the G P A C. I'm available for any questions you may have. Our consultant from Q K, Steve Brandt, is also in attendance to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from board? One, it says my district, I think, that we, I've even cut out, so I may not have a representative. Okay, if there's no comments. Thank the audience. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on now to board manager announcements and reports. We'll start with Supervisor Robinson.
Let's see, we'll go back to Thursday, September 11th. I attended the CSAC California Association of Counties Directors Meeting on Zoom. Legislative updates, legislature is now out of session. This year, there were approximately 2,300 bills that they looked at. Their number one priority was high speed rail and I believe they allocated a billion dollars to it. Unfortunately, their second to last priority was wildfire mitigation. Monday, September 15th through Friday, September 19th, I attended the R C R C Annual Conference in Tahoe with Chairman Brabham. Absolutely beautiful Tahoe is, also a long journey there and back. We had the pleasure of listening to Stephen Ford, the son of President Gerald Ford. He shared some, some thoughts and some insights into his father. And it was, it was, it was a nice insight into Gerald Ford's character. He knew the day that he signed the pardon, that he wouldn't be reelected. He just, he saved the country from the agony of about another four to six years of that ongoing. And that's the reason he made the decision. That's what we learned in the meeting. So that was a, that was a pleasure. Yesterday, attended a meeting with Supervisor Thier for Water 101. So continue to, to fill in the infinite cracks in water. You need a PhD for that one. And so I am grateful to General Manager Tulare Lake Basin Water Storage District for that, Jacob Westra. So I appreciate it.
Very good. Too much valley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, I reported on that a couple of months ago, our Latino caucus. We, we had Mr. Ford as our keynote speaker. And he, he doesn't he tell the good story on his father without, he all even talks about him being the president. He talks about what it meant as a father and, and the, and the character. And I'm glad he got to experience, to experience that on the, not to mention, he talked about his movie career too, right? A little bit about his movie. Mr. Chairman, last Friday, the 19th, I attended the Corcoran Mayor's and Vice Mayor's Pride Breakfast at Veteran's Hall. It was a lot of the Corcoran employees attended and we invited pastors from, well, they invited pastors from around the county. Some attended, they all got a chance to speak and we shared a good meal. Other than that, I was doing some work, getting ready for the town hall tomorrow night in Kettleman City, six o'clock. I want to thank Korea, CEO Martinez and her staff. Alex and, and others who spend a lot of time.
Alex C. Walker.
Alex C. Walker. Helping out to help me organize that, the work they've done for the PowerPoint, the presentation tomorrow. We're going to have a, a really good panel. It's not going to be about me talking. It's about us bringing the right people on that panel to give the good information to the community and just supportly be able to answer their questions. So we're going to highlight some curve guarding sidewalk, the bridge. So our consultants on the bridge are going to be there. We have cooperation from Caltrans, they're sending a rep to talk about the roundabouts and some of the traffic impacts in Kettleman. And then we're also going to insert your recommendation on the broadband, cause that's very important. So I know Alex was yesterday, said he's waiting on some information to add, we can add a slide or two about that. But, and then the Unidos Community Group in Kettleman was very helpful in taking door to door our flyer to get outreach out there. So I'm very much looking forward to tomorrow evening, but can't do it without Scott. So appreciate it.
Thank you. Wes there.
I thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week had a, actually had a complaint from a constituent.
Only one.
Only one. That, that dealt maybe with some, I don't know, not real clear instructions that was either put out by high speed rail or whatever, whatever. Brown, they got the information from about the closure of Houston Avenue for the high speed rail project. And anyway, spoke with some high speed rail folks and then, and then here locally with Jim Henderson. And, and I just say this just publicly that, that, that when, when Houston Avenue closes, Hanford or Mono Road will be fully open in both directions or just some confusion on the detour route. It just wasn't really sure, even I wasn't really sure that both lanes on Hanford and Mono Road would be fully open. And then I'm also told that, that that's kind of been pushed off a couple of weeks for when those closures take place. So, but anyway, that, that got resolved. And then yesterday, that kind of rolled into, and thank Supervisor Valley for setting up, had a meeting with, with some high speed rail folks. Obviously there was a big significant piece of that goes through the, the middle of my district. And so those, those, I mean, it was, was, was useful just to put a name to a face and, and to sit down and just, in case of emergency, I've got now some contacts. Also attended, Supervisor Robinson said this, this water meeting yesterday, like I think that we've got a magic wand. We just need to wave it and make it all good, but this, this is a very complex issue up and down the state. Learned about some, some sites along the California Aqueduct and the lack of maintenance on these, these water. How we transfer water around the state of California and there's this significant issues on top of the fact that we already don't have enough water. So, but it was, it was thank you Korea for, for arranging that. It was good introductions to Tulare Lake Water Basin folks. And, and then, and obviously this morning, thank you Catherine for, for posting about this event that took place this morning. Tended just a brief memorial placement and send cowfall and harrows group. Brought their truck and trailer here to the county complex this morning for us to place stickers for Captain Mark Deeds, our firefighter that we lost, fire captain we lost earlier this year. And then Deputy Alan Sharer that was killed in line of duty back in December 27th, 1999. Those two photos were added to that truck. Truck, truck and trailer. And just thank Jesse for, for what he does. He started that whole program because he lost his son. And his son's name is up on that trailer too. And you can, you can see that he was at the Tulare County Fair a couple of weeks ago. Comes here locally, I think he said he was trying to get it up to the Fresno County Fair, but if you see it out and about, you know, Jesse's good people and, and does the sound of, and with that, that's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Wes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Supported the Lemoore FFA with their linguista dinner on the 9th of September. That goes to send students to the national convention. September 11th was a remembrance at Lemoore College took place and was, was very well attended. The Kings County Extreme Heat and Community Resilient Working Group continues to work. We had a meeting on the 11th. Continue to identify strategies and survey questions for the community to gather more input. On the 13th, Kathy and I participated in this Roptimus of Hanford posted the child shopping spree. We had two very active third graders that just about drove me crazy, but it was kind of fun. So I thank them for doing that. They got a lot of good stuff. So yeah, they did all right. They were pretty good. Kings County Homeless Meeting took place on Monday. We talked about that today. Human Services Agency had their staff appreciation took place on the 17th. Nice time there. The Calvia Finance and Regional Authority Meeting, meeting on the 18th. Southport Kings had a meeting on the 18th, also on the evening, Lemoore City Council. The growers group continues to work on policies and the state water board continues to refuse to work with the G S A. The senior day in the park was rained out on the 19th, but seniors were treated to a lot of Kentucky Fried Chicken that they had to go to Hanford and pick up, but it was worked out very, very well. Colay College Falcon Football took the field on Saturday, the 20th against the Gladiators of Chabot. And then the 24th Annual Hanford Blues and Roots Festival was took place on the 20th. Also in Hanford, wonderful performances and everything worked out very, very well. And then yesterday, the Kings County Behavioral Health Advisory Board held its meeting. With that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Be real brief here. Traveled to Washington DC with our Valley Voice Trip. We have believe 11 counties that we travel there with all transportation issues. We met with our, both our federal senators, Padilla and Sheff. Met with Congressman Gray, Valdeo, Costa, Fong and the Penta. And discussed all of our transportation issues. If not, not much good done this time during a new administration, just more of a touchy feely, learn, learn each other's what they need. And then last week traveled to Lake Tahoe for R C R C, which is rural counties representing California and had a good event there. So with that, I'll turn it over to Terry Martinez for staff update and reports.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe we do have a few staff updates, I believe one from Public Works and I T John Devlin, so John.
Good morning, Chairman and the board. I just wanted to give you an update on the broadband last mile, they call it. It was the FFA, which is federal, future federal funds. I had reached out to Comcast and A and TNT and they got the, the initial tranche of money from the C P U C. And AT&amp;T said they're going to begin construction activities in the county this month, September. We have permits from county and Caltrans access facilities, perform design validations and prepare areas for the fiber deployment. Additionally, the C P U C is reviewing information maps that AT&amp;T submitted requesting Sequel clearance and permission to construct. We anticipate hearing from them this month or at the start of next month. Comcast stated the following, we're still finalizing things with a business partner and I would expect ground to break in late October, early November. I do have a couple of slides. You might have scooted down a little bit. This is Comcast and basically you can ignore the reservation, residential area. They, they decided not to go with Comcast, but when they initially submitted their map, they, they thought they were going to get that. But it's basically the area there south of Armona and it almost extends to the south there of Hanford and over towards Lemoore. And then up over there, the northwest corner quadrant there of the county. So that's where Comcast is going to go.
Yeah, the Island District.
Yeah. And then the other map is AT&amp;T, they got the Kettleman City. So it's Kettleman City proper, but it also extends down, I believe. Yeah, the waste management facility and there might be some other future development in that area. So I'm also going to email you this and there's also a link to the actual award from C P U C that was back in January when they published it. But just in case you want to look at any more details about this area that you might want to give to your constituents. Any questions I'd be happy to answer.
Not just to add to, so C P U C sent that they grant money, I think it was, I want to say 35, 38 million dollars. Not just to add to it. So C P U C said they have to pay grant money. I think it was, I want to say thirty five, thirty eight million dollars, right? And then to finish this project, you have to have matching money. A T and T and Comcast have stepped up and covered the matching money part of it. And we're also looking at another grant right now. We're going to send out flyers to pay for the initial hookup to the homes and we're working on that as well. So thank you.
John, if you could just make sure that we get a copy of that so we can put it online since the public wasn't able to see that through Teams.
Yes, of course. Of course. It's actually, both maps are in the full report too.
And we'll do a ground, a rip and cutting or a groundbreak, probably groundbreaking, probably the third week in October on Island area. And then soon after that will be for Supervisor Valley District and Kettleman City with A T and T. So.
Okay, so we'll move on to board correspondence. The board received an invitation from the Matty Institute on September fifteenth for their twenty fifth anniversary celebration, which will take place September twenty fourth. The board also received a letter of resignation dated September eighteenth from Scott, Public Guarding Veteran Service Officer. He resigns his position this year for retirement. The board received the following reports on September twenty second from the Kings County Director of Finance and all items related to August twenty twenty five of Investment Pool Portfolio Management Summary, a Treasury Report of Cash Investments and a Monthly Fund Balance Report. For upcoming events, Kings County Behavioral Health will host its Veterans Support Group tonight, Tuesday, September twenty third from five thirty, seven thirty at the Veterans Memorial Hall in Hanford. Kings County Library will host its Family Game Time at the Shatford Branch tomorrow, Wednesday, September twenty fourth from two to four P M. And Kings County in partnership with the Economic Development Corporation will host its twenty twenty five State of the County Event on October sixteenth from eleven to one thirty P M. At the Tachi Palace. Tickets for the events can be purchased online at Eventbrite. For upcoming agenda items, the following agenda items are for September thirtieth. We actually have quite a lengthy board meeting. Administration has four items, updated food vendor program, Calvance Termination Agreement, amendment for an agreement for Indigent Defense Services, Claims for Damages for Mercury Insurance Company on behalf of Jerry Garcia. Ag has one item on an agreement for Asian Citrus Detection Program. County Council has one item regarding the Tulare Lake Reclamation District Election Board Appointment. C D A has one item on the appointment of members of the Kings County General Plan Advisory Committee. District Attorney has one item on a continued participation in the Victim Witness Assistance Grant Program. Finance has two items, a property tax advance loan request by the Southport Kings Groundwater Agency and Amendment to an Agreement with Baker Tilly to exclude the Transportation Development Act audits for the City of Avanale. Health has one item regarding the WIC three year program agreement. Human Resources has an item regarding October has a National Retirement Security Month. H S A has two items, an amendment to an agreement for Reading and Beyond for Employment and Training Services and a memorandum of understanding with the Kings County Job Training Office. I T has an item regarding a Neo Gov subscription maintenance renewal agreement and Public Works has five items, a replacement for fleet vehicles for the current fiscal year. A Sixteenth Avenue, Sixteenth Avenue at Tulare Lake Canal Bridge Replacement Agreements, Approval Appraisals summaries for some properties on Houston Avenue and Cross Creek Bridge Replacement Project, a construction agreement with Catch Environmental for Construction Management Services for Hanford and Library Lamoore Libraries Remodel Project and a consultant agreement with A P S I Construction Management for the Construction Management Services for the project. I'm sorry, I, I have those mixed up. So one is the actual contractor for the library and Hanford Library Lamoore, and one is for the Construction Management Services for the Hanford Lamoore Library remodel project. And lastly, U C Co-op will have an item regarding proclaiming National Four H Week and that'll all take place next Tuesday.
Thank you.
And grand jury report.
Yes. Oh, that's right. And the grand jury report that we need to submit before August second. Thank you. Over sixteen.
You'll be gone.
It's a Thursday.
We'll, we'll represent you well. Okay, at this time, we'll go to closed session as outlined by counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The board has eight items on for closed session today as identified on the agenda. The first item is Public Employee Performance Evaluation, County Administrative Officer. Item two is conference with labor negotiators for unrepresented management. Item three is existing litigation versus the County of Kings. Item four is Madrigal, the County of Kings, existing litigation. Item five Cunningham, the County of Kings, existing litigation. Item six, Bade, the County of Kings, existing litigation. Item seven is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, five cases. And item eight is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, County of Kings versus Green Galaxy Builders. With that, I'll turn it back to you for public comment.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none, we'll adjourn until next Tuesday, September thirtieth at nine A M. And we'll be back here in four minutes for California Public Finance Authority Meeting and California Community Housing Agency Regular Meeting. And then at one o'clock, Board of Equalization Special Meeting. Thank you.